Welcome everyone here and everyone at home for the July 26th Eugene City Council Work Session. And the first item we have up is our committee reports and items of interest. And I'll start off and thank Mike for sitting in for me here on last Wednesday. Thank you very much. I was participating on a Oregon Transportation Commission panel to really talk about the roles of various levels of government in local decision making. So it was an interesting panel. And I was there actually representing both us and MP, Metropolitan Policy Organizations throughout the state. And then last week I also went to the OMPAC, which is the Oregon Metropolitan Planning Commissions throughout the state, a meeting in Corvallis. I went to hear Robert Kennedy Jr. speak last week. That was really interesting and fun. And then I've been participating, today was the second day, in a thought leaders breakfast for 4J School District because they're facing a $27 million deficit to deal with and are trying to talk through some of the issues with some community members. This afternoon, I went to a great celebration of the American Disabilities Act at the Halyard Center, celebrating the work of this community and the difference that ADA has meant not only here but across the world. So, pretty neat. We have Track Town 12 kickoff is this week. So we're now looking out to the second Olympic track and field trials coming our way. So, pretty exciting stuff there. And then Sponsors is going to have their building dedication this week. It's called, their new building, I believe, is called Roosevelt Crossing. And their dedication is at 4:00 on Thursday, 99. And I'm participating in a town hall with Commissioners Sorensen and Handy on the future of the fairgrounds at 6:30 at Harris Hall on Wednesday. And then this weekend is the Mayor's Summer Conference. Mayors from all over the state, it can be taking place in Cottage Grove, so I'll be participating in that as well. Mike?
Thank you Mayor. It was a pleasure to sit in for you, and I'd just like to say you go ahead and feel free to travel all you like and all.
You know, when he says that to me, I'm getting nervous.
First thing I wanted to say was that this last Wednesday, the 21st, and before that, the previous, the 14th, I had a chance to attend the downtown, Summer in the City events that are happening downtown on Wednesday nights. And I just really want to say, great job and congratulations to a couple of staff people that I know of. At least a number of folks in the Park and Cultural Recreation Services have been working real hard there. But Billy and Isaac and several of the folks who were working down there have really done a great job of making some really strange and interesting things happen downtown and bringing all kinds of people.
They had dodgeball last week.
They did, as a matter of fact. And that's the thing. Two weeks ago, I had my son came down and we went to the skateboarding competition and free-for-all that was all over the area, and it was lots of fun with all kinds of kids.
Welcome to South Eugene.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you, and then last week was the dodgeball tournament. And I have to say, there were a number of city employees who were out there trying to put a hurt on one another with the dodgeball thing, and that was a lot of fun to watch. It really was a good time and a lot of fun by many and a lot of downtown businesses.
You went in the back of the room with them.
As a matter of fact, yeah, I do. I see somebody that I last saw in a headband right back there that was doing pretty well. So, congratulations to the staff members who are working so hard on that.
Great.
I also had a chance, another lighthearted thing, on Friday, the 16th, to be an official witness for the Eugene Emeralds at PK Park there where they attempted to break the Guinness Book of World Records for the most number of people doing the moonwalk at the same time. And there were about 650 people out there on the field moonwalking, some of which are sitting at the end of the table down here with a tie on. And I have pictures to prove it. And he did a fantastic job too. He was a pro. The city manager of ours did quite a job. So, I got to witness that. And then finally, here the other day, Friday, 23rd.
Lends itself to all.
George and I both had a chance, and I think John was there for that as well. We had a chance to go to City Club and hear Gene Tate and Dave Fronmeyer and the CAPS Organization give their report and have a discussion about regional public safety issues and Lane County Public Safety challenges that we have before us and how in the world we're going to fund what we need to do for the next several years. So, that's what I have today.
Good.
Thank you Mayor. So, La Rapa has changed the day that they meet, so they actually meet this Monday, the fourth Monday of the month. So, we had our meeting today, and we're actually, you know, I've encouraged them to have better relations with each other, and so we're going to be doing a potluck out at Riverwood Park. We haven't quite picked the date yet, but I'll let you all know. We're going to be meeting with our advisory team, staff, and then the people who are in La Rapa Board, hopefully to gender, you know, better discussions at the table in policymaking. They are also looking at Chadwick. They did an RFP for, you know, community building amongst ourselves, and so we're going to be looking at that. There's a subcommittee. I spent the weekend out in Coburg Road with about 300 people who didn't have access to medical care that were able to be hooked up with some sort of outcome that was favorable to them. There was over, two dental vans came down from Portland, and they actually processed 50 people through. And those people started getting in line as early as 4:00 a.m. And then there was a handful of people who wanted dental that, you know, we've taken their names and we're trying to find access for them somewhere in the community. I just want to thank the Cascade Medical Clinic, Cascade Medical Team for coming home and taking care of our folks here at home and all those folks that did that hard work. It was great to be there. Another message along the medical line, Volunteers in Medicine has officially moved to Springfield, so they will not be over on West 11th. So, hopefully people will, you know, they will have notified all their clients, but I thought this was a good time to take an opportunity to say that. And I spent last Thursday, the 22nd, with a room full of about 30 people there at St. Catherine's Hall, the last part of the Invision Eugene or the next step in it. And it was really good. I felt, the first one, the three days, I felt rushed because I had a lot of work to do, and I just kind of put everything aside and just was there. And it was really nice. I got to visit with a lot of nice people, and I feel really hopeful that, you know, at the check-in, that's the only word I can think of. You know, when I hear people talking and seeing heads nodding when other people are talking, you know, I just think, okay, you know, whatever process we use and whatever we come up with, you know, hopefully it'll have a broad support for the outcome of that. And I think that's it for me.
Hey Chris?
Thanks. Actually, the mayor covered a number of mine, so that can make mine pretty short. The only one I would fill in with is that last Monday, I had the chance to go to a meeting with some folks from the state. They have implemented a new process for funding low-income housing projects, and rather than having the state just award the money, you now have to kind of justify and confirm that you can get a good project done with the money. It's not that it's a bad thing. I think it's a good thing for them to do, but it's another hoop you have to jump through in order to get the funding. So, the Willa Kinsey Low Income Housing Project, we got together to talk with the state about ensuring that we would have a good, desirable, positive project, and they had very nice things to say. So, I represented the Housing Policy Board and the City Council on its vote to show that there is a high level of community support with Salem because that's an important part of being able to get funding. So, I think that went really well. And Becky Wheeler did a great job in supporting the city there as well. So, that's the main thing I have.
Great. Thank you.
On Tuesday, I went to a Human Rights Commission meeting. On Wednesday, I went to the library to listen to Alexandre Cousteau's talk. It was very well attended. It must have been, I don't know, 150 people there. It was kind of unusual. It was in the stacks. It was in the opening of the second floor. It was not in one of the meeting rooms, and so people were sitting all over the place. There's computer desks and it was packed. Her group goes around in the Third World, but also in the Gulf here at home. And they help small towns and at-risk communities secure their water sources, as well as help them get funding to purify the water so that it's drinkable. And then Friday, I went to the City Club, the Council, American City Manager were there. It wasn't really so much new for me, but I'm just really, can hardly wait to see their report when they get it all put together. I think that'll be very, very interesting.
Is George Pauling on the phone?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Go ahead, George. If you've got anything.
Okay. First of all, I'm on the road to recovery. I probably would have been there tonight had it not been for some logistical problems, but I'm going to try and make it into Wednesday's meeting.
You sound good, George.
Unfortunately, I haven't been able to get much, go many places or do many things, but I do plan on attending. Next Tuesday night is the National Night Out, where we travel to all the different neighborhoods, people from the city and the EPD, and we meet with the neighborhoods and et cetera. So, I'm going to try and make it to that. I don't know how long I'll last, but I'll do that. And then in this week's package, we've got a stack of copies of letters that were sent to area residents where we're doing pavement preservation projects. And I noticed one of the paragraphs in there was asking people, you know, your street's going to be affected, and please take arrangements to park your vehicle somewhere else during these periods of time. Mr. City Manager, I just hope that we're making some effort to try to do a little extra patrol in the evening where, when these people are moving their cars from their normal parking spaces into other houses or wherever into different streets, so, you know, the neighborhoods feel a little more safe. You know, when things are moved around like that, people tend to get a little nervous about where they have to leave their vehicles.
Okay.
And then the last thing, also, Mr. City Manager, I appreciate the follow-up and feedback on the issue I raised at our last Monday night meeting about the Glory B project out north, the north part of Eugene. I'm glad to hear that that project's still moving forward, and I hope the best outcome on that. So, thank you for doing the follow-up on that, sir.
Okay.
George, we're glad to hear that you're recovering quickly.
Yeah, well, I'm recovering. The quickly part is, it's going to be about 12 weeks, so we'll see.
All right. We wish you the best. Jennifer?
I just had two items that have already been covered, and that was the Sponsors dedication and the National Night Out on August 3rd. And you can find all the fun in the Bethel area over at the Candlelight Park off from Royal Avenue where we were last year.
Great. Thank you. Betty?
Thank you. I just came back from a meeting of the Human Development Committee of the National League of Cities, and we're working on Workforce Reinvestment Act and still immigration. And even though we have healthcare passed now, which is something we were lobbying for, we're talking about dental care, which is an important part of healthcare, and we may be thinking about that. People were impressed when I told them how, they were talking about how workforce, people should be working on helping people train for jobs that are coming. And I was able to report that that's what's happening here, that they are training people for jobs in the hospital that will be here. And they were talking about how sometimes people get trained for jobs that aren't there. And they liked that. I did see, we toured a place though, in Hampton, Virginia, where they have a one-stop shopping center for employment, and they have, you can take college courses and you can even in that same building get a PhD, which is pretty impressive. What I've been hearing from constituents is everyone's in favor of naming the bridge, the, I won't try to say it, the Wella, anyway. Lots of people, lots of people are writing and calling and speaking to me in person saying they like the name. I have had some complaints and some fears. People are worried about chickens. Several people are. They don't want chickens next to them.
Kill the chickens.
And... I don't want chickens, I know. And one person said, the one that was the most compelling to me, said that her neighbor has rushed out and got some more chickens because we have suspended enforcement, and that she has, they bring rats and mice to eat the feed and flies to sit on the manure. And I thought, those are pretty good arguments. I hadn't heard those before. And other people just don't want the noise. And that's debatable whether it's a bad noise or not. I don't mind it myself, but... And people are, as usual, people are concerned about the Amazon pool, which is closed at 5:00 most days, just when it gets hot. And also, they're very concerned when it's closed on a weekend, the only time that some people can go. And they know that they can go to other pools, but people in the south part of Eugene voted to put it in. They pay taxes like everyone else, and they're really, this happens every summer, a lot of people are saying they're really unhappy. The pool isn't open when they want to go there. Thank you.
Jennifer?
I just have to follow up on the chicken issue. Did anybody hear the story about the city in Washington State that instead of having a tour of homes like we usually have from the Homeowners Association, it was a tour of chicken coops? Because the technology and all the amenities that are so important to growing chickens in an urban environment. I thought it was funny.
I wonder if there's a lead certified chicken.
Chicken condos.
Pretty much.
I think they did something like that in South Eugene.
If I can interrupt, I have one more thing I need to bring up.
All right, then I get to Alan. Go ahead, George.
Okay. This is, again, this is going to be directed to John. Recently, particularly within the last two weeks, I've seen an increase in letters to the editors, and I've heard some comments throughout the community about the noise level at PK Park during the M's games. Is there anything that we as a city could do to either monitor or look into that problem and see if we can work with the Emeralds Organization, University of Oregon, to mitigate some of the noise at the neighborhood, the Chevy Chase Neighbors, and along the bike path and the river, so they don't have to listen to the noise at the hearing sometimes?
We'll follow up with that and send something back out to the council.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to try and get out and just cruise through the neighborhood and listen some evenings, but again, I've been kind of stuck here at home for the last two weeks. I haven't been able to do that. Thank you.
Helen?
I attended the Symphony in the Park. Saw Betty there and John there. That was a great concert. It was very lively music and very appropriate for a park. Okay, I didn't see you. And it was really fabulous. I mean, it sold out in literally a couple of hours. So, those that were lucky enough to get tickets, and those who weren't, get in line early next year. I also went to the Sustainability Commission last week. We worked on our work program, which will be coming to the council soon in an upcoming meeting. And then I'm also, was appointed to the Transportation and Land Use Subcommittee for the Oregon Global Warming Commission, and we're working through that sector's action plan over three meetings, and I'm the co-chair of that meeting. And it happened, the last of the three meetings happens to fall on Wednesday, the 11th, when we have our last meeting before break. So, I'll be in Portland, but I'll chime in by phone. It'll end at noon. And it will because I'm the chair.
Make it happen.
And then I too have heard some noise about chickens, mostly about the noise if there's too many of them. Not necessarily that they're a bad thing, but it's an issue of if there are too many people, have had some conflicts with neighbors that have had noisy chickens.
I guess you'll get prepared for the chicken agenda coming our way.
Chicken debate. Oh, Lord. Hope we don't get fried on that.
City Manager?
Thank you Mayor. Just a couple of things. I was going to mention, we're currently scheduled for September 8th, your first work session back from break to talk about chicken and goat regulations, among other things, so...
Goat? Now we have goats.
Oh, no.
We're talking about cat regulations while we're at it.
Yeah.
So, that'll, on September 8th. A couple of other quick things, just within the city organization, as you know, there's lots going on. The library use is as robust as last year. You might remember last year, we actually broke records for attendance. We're sort of in that same mode this year, so a lot of people are out there using the library, which is great. EPD currently doing their kids' safety camps are underway. They have two sessions this year. Last year, they had one session, and so a lot of kids out there. The Mobility International USA, that's the organization actually bringing 30 women in from around the world. And our Adaptive Recreation Group is supporting that. As you know, we have a nationally recognized Adaptive Recreation Program here in City of Eugene. And then lastly, I just want to say thank you to the Fleet folks. Spent a morning out there last week underneath a sweeper with a wrench, trying not to break it worse than it already was, but it's a great group out there. If any of the councilors have an interest, would love to take you out on a tour. No, just take a tour out there in the Fleet shop and some of the other things out there, so, that's it.
I just wanted to clarify to the manager that Mobility International's been here a long time.
Right.
And they actually bring people from all over the world to learn about accessibility issues here in our community, so we're very proud of them. And Andrew, I wanted to ask you, I know that there's funding reductions for La Rapa. Is that going to...
That hasn't affected the budget, no.
Okay.
They haven't hired a lot of people that have been leaving. Okay, so, at this point, we're...
You got another item?
I did. I just wanted to make a comment about passing about one of our local leaders, Chuck Ivey, passed away. He was a longtime county commissioner. He was an awesome human being. Him and his wife, I knew them very well. I rented from them for several years, and they were just the nicest people, and I just wanted to make comment that, you know, Chuck Ivey, you know, has passed.
Thank you for doing that. All right. Thank you, everybody. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the executive session to discuss the city manager's evaluation. So, the Eugene City Council will now meet in executive session, move out of our regular meeting into executive session, to review and evaluate the performance of an employee. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 1926602I. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Come back in a while.
Even elected people?
Yes, yes, yes. Decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome that audience back into the room. So, with that... With that...
Financially particularly, it was really stabilizing our core and then really investing for the future. And so when we talk about it in the context of our financial situation, we've corrected some longstanding, relatively longstanding structural imbalances, starting to save for the future, living within our means and some of those kinds of things. And I think the Budget Committee and the Council had some really good discussions this year as we kind of thought about how we're going to do that in the times we find ourselves, but also to invest in the future, whether it's the downtown public safety, it's property crime, it's some things around our Climate and Energy Action Plan. We've talked about a whole host of kinds of things. And I just want to offer some thanks. One, to our executive team. We have a really good executive team that works very well together. We've had three relatively new hires onto the team. And I think they're doing just outstanding work individually and collectively. And of course, we have our Planning and Development Director position out right now, going through that process. And that's going to be another key component for us. We also have an extremely talented group of division managers. And this is the group that, while the executive team makes the policy, this is the group that actually is charged with, one, carrying that out and, two, really understanding what's going on in the organization, in the community, and feeding information back up to the execs and recommendation. And we have a very talented team that does that, as well as just employees throughout the organization. I think we found that they stepped up to the challenge, our financial challenge, and really engaged in trying to figure out new and innovative ways of doing some things. And we saw a lot of that play out in the budget. And I think that was very positive. I'm not going to sort of repeat what I said in my self-evaluation. I'll let people read that. But I also want to just thank all of you for the work this past year. I think it's been a good year. I think as a body and individually, you've provided some really good guidance to me and the staff. And we appreciate that tremendously. I think the conversations have been very productive and civil. And I think we're moving the community in ways in which you want us to move. So with that, I'll turn over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jen. I guess what I would like to start, what I will do, if it's okay with you all, is I'll just do a round robin. And I'm just going to say, first of all, that I want to say for me, and probably for all of us, that I thank you for your leadership of our city staff and your work with and for us. It's very important to us, and I think it's been very successful. Appreciate you doing something that I felt a real need in the organization, that's setting your own goals as a city manager and working with us on our goals and helping us move toward our goals. So that makes us feel more successful in doing what we need to do. And I believe that's your job, and I appreciate that you're doing that. I also want to quickly say that I appreciate the focus on economic development and the triple bottom line. I think that's very important work that we need to keep doing. And I think we need to hone in on it and specific goals and benchmarks with partners so we can feel like we're really moving as a community. I really do appreciate and value, because it is my own values, about bringing people from different points of view together to try to find a way forward together. And I appreciate that in many ways it's been happening. But I especially appreciate it in a very difficult and challenging job we're trying to do with Envision Eugene. But I think it is really part of the work that we need to do for our community. You've spoken about the difficult journey of the budget. And I want to, once again, I think we've all said this many times, but I felt the values that went into the budget decisions were really important and reflective of our community's values. And I appreciated that it wasn't just one of those, "Cut it across the board and go home," that it really spoke to the importance our employees are to us and spoke about our commitment to providing services even under tough times. And I very much appreciate your efforts on part of our downtown and arts and culture. I appreciate that you don't get defensive when criticisms or suggestions are made. I appreciate that you don't seem to mind taking the heat, and that's good. And I do think we have some more work to do. I think, I do believe we need to strengthen our relationships with, your relationship with labor. And I think you recognize that, and I think it's really important. I think we've still got to work on public safety and dealing with some of our youth issues. Be sure that we really measure and try to move our dial on all these things. Got to work on our relationship with the county and try to find ways to partner better with them. So with that, again, I just generally, I found you really good to work with. Thank you.
Excuse me. I'd like to echo much of what the mayor said there. I agree with a good deal of that. I'd also say that I think you've done an outstanding job this year. I think that leading this organization and the conversations that take place in our community are sometimes a difficult needle to thread. And there's often an easy opportunity for the contentious situation to arise. And I've been really impressed with your ability to keep, to help the council and keep the community focused on more of a best outcomes-driven process that helps us move forward in positive ways. And I think you've done a really good job with that this year. I think that keeping, as the mayor said, that positive attitude around taking difficult situations on and at the same time, creating an organization that has more of a respect and an honor-to-serve type of mentality. And a service mentality starts from the top, and you've done a very good job with that. I remember when you were interviewing for the position, you saying that you wanted, you saw yourself oftentimes as a coach. And I remember your first day, and I said, "Well, Coach, you know, what kind of team do you want to build here?" And you saying that you wanted to build a high-functioning one. And I think you've done just that. I think that the choices of many of the people in the executive positions have been just right and have been people that create a very supportive organization. As the mayor said, I think that the fact that we got through the budget process with so few amendments, so few contentious questions in a fairly quick and orderly way is a testament to the fact that you had all of that dealt with in advance, had the tough discussions out front, figured out some answers that everyone could live with and move forward. And I was really impressed with that. So I think you've done an outstanding job this year. I would respect your request to move forward as the rest of the staff has seen some difficult budget times, to kind of move on par with the rest of the organization. with the idea of how we move forward with the compensation sorts of packages that tie to specific performance measures and make it more mechanical rather than political. And I think that's a very good way for us to move forward. I don't know that I personally will need to see a subcommittee work on that. I like what I see here in terms of what you've put forward as a recommendation for future years and would probably support the recommendation. So, good job, John.
Thank you.
I too want to say thank you and excellent job this year, in particular, working through a tough year around the budget and I thought you handled that extremely well. The staff worked well together and the, whoa. New chairs.
He disappears under this.
Where you put your feet? The, I thought the way that the budget was handled, the principles that were used and that went into the crafting of that budget, I think were well-formulated and well-thought-out and I really appreciated that. I like that we're linking the city council goals and policies to the work plan and creating performance measurements and then I think the follow-on thing is making, reflecting that in the budget. So I long sought that linkage and that's the appropriate linkage I think that we should have, so I applaud you for that. I hear a lot from the community about you and that you've done a good job and very infrequently hear anything, if at all, negative, so, and I really appreciate your outreach to the community and being out there and going out and being, probably to your wife's chagrin, but I think you've made some great hires. I think one of the hallmarks that we get to assess you on is what kind of hires you make at the executive team level and I think Sarah, Christie and Pete are all great hires and so, great job on that. I think you've built up community trust and improved that and I think moving the triple bottom line tool and integrating it, you've got a good start on that. I would like to see that get further and get completed and work into the AISs. And I very much appreciate the heads-up that you give us and the communication that we have on a continual basis, our monthly meetings and just the way that you treat the council and communicate with us. I think some of the things that you could work on, better relationship with the unions, it's been a tough year, and with the U of O as well. I think the integrating the triple bottom line is what I mentioned before. I think the economic development plan that we've crafted, I appreciate what it's gone so far, but I don't think it captures the shift to the green economy as much as that we should be and I was a little disappointed in that, but I think it's something that we can work on. And then I think you've shown excellent leadership and I give you high marks. You listen and you collaborate, which is refreshing and what I expect out of a city manager. I like your can-do attitude and very much, unfortunately, you've raised the bar and I hope we do away with this exceeds meets. Now, now you've raised the bar, now you get to meet your expectations, so I think maybe it'd be wise to change that next year. And I too will accept your offer to not take a raise this year and thank you for that.
Andrea.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree pretty much with what everybody has said so far. I just will highlight a couple of things that I had in my rating. I really have appreciated the way John allows us access to the staff. I think that's really important for me because I'm such a face-to-face person and I, and I need that. I need to be able to talk to people and figure it out and poke their brains and try and figure out what it is. I'm trying to do what's best for my constituency, so I really appreciate the open-door policy you've allowed for us. I don't really have anything specific to, you know, say in my, in my evaluation. I, you know, I feel like we have a pretty open-door relationship with you and if there's something, it's in time that I mention it to you that I'm, if I'm not happy about it. And there has, I don't think there's been anything, I think I've had a couple of concerns about a couple of things, but I don't feel like it's not workable. But I did want to kind of highlight something that I turned and that didn't get turned. I gave you a meets expectations plus because if you would have met my expectations, you would have capped the oil spill in the Gulf of Mexico, you would have ended world hunger, you would have created world peace, and you would find Osama bin Laden.
You've got one next year.
Yeah, so, and that was before, so, but I appreciate your work with us, John, and I appreciate having you in the community. It's always good to hear.
Another good reason to do away with that scale. Thank you.
I appreciate hearing community members, you know, have ownership of you, you know, that they feel like you're really doing a good job and that there's no monkey business going on down here and, you know, people dislike it. And I really appreciate your outreach out to the community. I think it's really evident that you're concerned about the whole community, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Chris.
Yeah, I won't read my specific comments because anybody that wants to read them are here, so I'll kind of talk at the more larger and anecdotal level because I think, I can illustrate it with a point. And for me, I think you are directly involved in helping to create kind of the workplace environment and the culture that helps us get to where we are today. And when I looked at this document, and I see an evaluation document that's better than one I've seen in a long time. It was more thorough, people wrote more comments, it was more thoughtful and deliberate. It was not kind of the sparring and, you know, using it to kind of, you know, do whatever it was going to do. This one looked like a real performance evaluation. It was real sincere conversation about how you're doing and the kinds of things they like and the kinds of things they would want to see done better. To even be able to get to this kind of a document, I think, is a credit to the culture that you have helped to create. And so when I complement that culture, it's more than you, but it's also through you to all the other people who have helped to create that culture and you're part of that as well. And that then extends to us because we need a culture that we can work effectively within because these comments were written by us and we could have written them this way or we could have written them this way, but the culture we, you have helped us to create as a body has helped us to create one, to me, of the best performance evaluation processes we've had in a long time. It's more sincere, it's more thoughtful, the comments are really well-directed, and I think that moves us light years ahead in terms of being effective in what we want to do. So in a way, you helped to create the good process that's used to evaluate you and it's a circle, but it's a good one and I'm very appreciative of that. And I also recognize that you want to be a part of that culture and that the recognition that it's been a tough budget and that you shouldn't have a compensation that goes beyond whatever one else gets, that you are part of the same family, you should, you should work along with them and receive the same kind of recognition that they do and benefits that they do, but also take the hits that they do, I think is a tribute to your desire not to see yourself as separate from the city organization, but a part of it. And so as everyone else has said, I'm willing to accept your recommendation, but I do it with gratitude, recognizing that you're trying to be a part of the larger city family that we are also a part of. And so my comments in here are all sincere, just as I believe everybody else's are and I think that's a really good thing. And so to me, this has been one of the best performance evaluation processes I've seen in a long time and I think that's, we can take credit for that, but you also have to take credit for that as being the right person in the right place at the right time, which has really helped us all along.
Thank you. George Poling.
Thank you. You know, I really don't know if I can say much more than that, it's already been said by my fellow counselors, John, but I do want to point out that, you know, you have become a face of our community in a very short period of time, not just in the community, but of our community. And people look for you and look at you for your leadership, your guidance and your ability to manage to move the city organization forward. Every day it seems like we're moving a little bit forward, every little incremental step, but we are finally taking those steps forward. You know, I particularly appreciate your sense of humor and your ability to laugh at yourself, you know, that I'm sure helps bring a more sense of, I don't know, to the community that you're approachable and that you're open about what you do and that people can trust you. I know I do. I appreciate all the hard work you put into it and I appreciate the fact that you're willing to continue to work with that same work ethic. I liked the proposal that you have put out for your compensation. By recommending no compensation this year just shows that, you know, you're really, you know, you're realistic about the thing. You realize that we're in a tough financial times and you are willing to take basically no pay raise for the time being until we kind of come out of this. I like your suggestions for the coming years. I think it's, it's good to have something in place so that you know what to expect, you know? If you, if you meet these goals, this is what you're going to get. In the past, it hasn't been that way and that might be a reason why we've had so many city managers over the past number of years. You know, I, I just hope we don't have to go through a selection process to find another good city manager because, John, I don't, I don't want you to leave. I want you to stick around as long as, as long as we can keep you because I think you're doing a wonderful job and I appreciate all the hard work you've done. Thank you.
George Brown.
Well, I echo some of the comments of fellow counselors. I really appreciate the way that you and staff managed the budget this year. It was very difficult and it was a pretty good outcome. I like the way you go out about, out and about in the community and link to the neighborhoods and all the various organizations and events and I hear comments from other people that I know in town and they really appreciate that you do that, as do I. And I like your suggestions here. I really appreciate your suggestions from this tough times for your, to deferring your compensation and appreciate that. Otherwise, I don't really have too much to add to my written comments.
Thanks, George. Jennifer.
I'm sort of in the same spot. I like the way Chris captured it, that you're the right person at the right place at the right time. And I too hear a lot of good things about you and the community from various leaders that they feel that they can, that you're approachable and that you listen to them. And as Mike mentioned, I appreciate your focus on best outcomes because I think that's been really helpful. If we can get our worst fears out there and then identify our best outcomes, then I think we can work collectively as a group toward those goals. We've made some good strides in that way this year, so, you know, I don't envy your job. I really do believe it's, it takes a unique personality to be an administrator in the public realm and you seem to have captured what it takes to run Eugene, so thank you.
Thank you.
Eddie.
Well, it sounds like a love fest. I don't really have anything to add to what I have written comments about being out in the community, though I do hear people wonder why you are not at City Club more often and whether Rotary is more important than City Club. But I think, I noticed in the comments from staff and I've said this before too, that you do, as one person put it, you have a thick skin and I would say you remain calm and you're able to, to deal with criticism and some of us are able to give it sometimes. I do, I, I see a lot of good things, your support of the arts and I do think that sometimes we don't get enough choices or complete, and I've written that down. So as the most powerful person in Eugene, I guess you're, I, I wonder if you consider yourself that, probably are. Thank you.
What to do with that? I don't know.
What do you do with that?
I'm the most powerful person.
Well, just a couple of other things that I want to add to what I said earlier. I really do feel like we're making progress as a community and that really is important to me and I think it makes us all feel, gives us more energy to do the work that we have to, have to do. So I'm, you know, I, I appreciate your, the whole staff's can-do-ness. To me, I feel like we're all kind of moving in the same direction, council and staff and the community and all kind of pushing in the same direction and I think that will serve our, serve Eugene well, so that, that's exciting to me because that's what we're all here for, is to have our city move along. And I did want to say that one of the things I do like about you is that you seem to really like our community and it seems very genuine and you seem to get a kick out of things and, and I like that because I want to feel that the person who's in charge of our staff work and our services in the community really appreciates and respects and likes our community. Now, I'm not going to argue over who's the most powerful person in this city.
I don't think it's me.
It's probably Richard LaRue here. Yes.
This table would be the person who's the fifth vote.
That's right. Exactly. Well, there. Anyway, and I too just want to reemphasize what Andrea said. I, I just appreciate the openness with staff, that we all, it allows us all to feel like we're really working together and I think it, in some ways, it may make us all be less demanding of staff because it's not being withheld from us. You're, you're trying to, to help us and work with us and that's, that's really, that's really a good, a good feeling. And I also have to say that I appreciate, and I feel this about all of our staff, you included, is that I think people are acting like they enjoy the challenges that are out in front of us and they don't see them as things that they can't get over. They see them as things that have to be solved and we have the capacity within us, with all of us, to try to solve, to solve those problems and, and we have a lot of people in our community who have gone through and are going through some really difficult times and I think when people are going through some very difficult economic times and some people are in really bad positions in the community, that if they can have some confidence that they've got a group of people here who are going to do their best to try to make this community better for them, do our best to make sure that they get the opportunities they need to raise their own families, that, that makes me feel that we're doing the right thing and so I appreciate the work we're trying to do together a lot.
I need to put the motion up here on the table.
So the motion.
I actually have, Mayor, if I could, I have a, an adjustment to it based on the conversation I'd be happy to make if the city attorney wants to make sure I don't say it the wrong way here, I'll be happy to give this a shot.
Okay.
Move to complete goal-setting for the next year with the city manager by October 1st, 2010, and to approve the suggested compensation adjustment package and process beginning next year, next budget year, FY12.
It's not clear to me if you say we approve adjustment package, what is it that you're referencing?
I thought I said suggested, but if I didn't, I did mean to say suggested.
Aye.
Not approved. In an email from John dated today, I believe.
And so what the, if the council approves your motion, what the council would be doing is saying, it's approved or you're going to be working on it?
No, that we approve the suggest, suggestion, not that we'll be working on.
Is there ever ready to be?
Sorry?
I don't think the council will agree with that.
Well, you're perping a suggestion.
There's only two changes in, okay.
I think it appears to me what Mike is trying to do is move beyond saying just the courage.
I'll speak to it if I get a second.
Courage agreement, but he's looking at this and saying, I want to say that we're going to do that too, right?
If I have a second, I'll speak to it.
You want two?
Second.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, the, what I meant by this was, the two things that are put forward in the potential compensation package are the, the change in the evaluation criteria to the four categories and then the deferred compensation adjustments for the 2012 to out-years. Do I have that right as the two factors?
Uh huh.
So I didn't, I didn't see anything in that that looked like it was overly complex, so I thought that's what I would move forward as a way to deal with this, starting in next budget year.
Okay, Chris.
I appreciate.
Glenn, excuse me, prevent, Chris. Glenn, did you want to say something first?
I think the motion's fine. What it will mean is if the council approves this, we will bring back to you an amendment to the contract that the council has with John, give it to the council officers and the mayor to take a look at and if you say, yeah, that's exactly what the council approved, then one option would be the, I think it's the council president that actually signs it. If there's, as we try to write it, if there's any question, the three of you can say, let's have the council approve the contract amendment. So today, you can approve it in concept, but we'll need to put it into contract form so it's actually binding on the council and future councils.
So then, if I understand what you're saying, Glenn, is even if people approve this, they'll still get another shot once it's in writing? this, they'll still get another shot, once it's in writing, to say this is what we want?
Unless, as part of this, the council specifically delegates to the council president to sign a contract based on this concept. So if you wanted to add that also, then the council would not have to deal with this again. If the council wants to deal with it again, approve this.
Well, I think, I think what you outlined there, that it comes back to the council officers and the mayor, and if it seems in any way outside of what we approved, then we bring it to the full council for a discussion. That's what I, that was the intent of my motion.
Chris.
I appreciate what you're trying to do, and my moving-too-quickly antenna is starting to quiver a little bit, and it's only quivering in that we've just gotten this. There could be a work session around this. We could still have some conversation about this, not that this isn't a good idea, but I'm not ready to vote on it and then have the conversation. I think what I would be more willing to do, since we kind of know what we're going to do compensation for this year, this is a year away. We could have a work session to talk about this, nail it down, have what I think is a healthy deliberative discussion, then put in place something that we were all comfortable with. I'm just feeling like trying to do it now, there's no need to try to do this now. I think it's a great start, worthy of conversation. I don't want to delay it any longer than it needs to be. I think we need to move right forward on it, but I'm not prepared to link it right now with the current performance evaluation, because I want to get that taken care of.
Offer an adjustment. Perhaps I'd be willing to amend my own motion to say, to bring back to council for a future work session, an agreement based on the email put forward.
If you wanted to amend it to say, and to schedule a work session to talk about compensation for next year, I think that would be just super-duper.
Fine. You said bring back an agreement.
So now let's get, make sure we've got the language down, so, because then you'll need to, be sure that your second agrees too. So you, your motion is...
Has the first part ended around goal-setting and has the second part that reflects bringing back to council for a work session, a proposal that parallels this manager's email as a compensation for FY12 and process for dealing with it from that point forward.
Okay. She says, okay. Alan, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I was just going to reiterate what Chris said. I think his spidey senses were reacting, and I think there's things in here we'd like to talk about. For instance, one of the things I would like to talk about is that I think the incentives to stay aren't high enough, so, that's, for instance, but I'd like to have a conversation in full public session about this.
Okay. Anybody else, anything that you want to say?
Well, Elaine's spied in too next week.
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate. I've got seven here. George Poling.
I vote yes.
Okay, eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Anything else for the good of the order? Yes.
I think we should honor John.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it very much.
You're welcome, John. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just don't get a swelled head about it.
That won't, yeah. We won't allow that.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor.